Call to all the Public Property and Parks Committee meeting. I roll call please.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Present, Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present, Counsel Net?
Present.
Present, Counsel Matul?
Present.
Present, Counsel Alensug?
Present.
Right, person on the agenda?
We have a discussion regarding an RFP for 78 Rockdale Avenue.
Attorney Lamanna? Call to all the Public Property and Parks Committee meeting. I roll call please.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Present, Counsel Lapierre?
That volume is on.
Present, Counsel Net?
Present.
Present, Counsel Matul?
Present.
Present, Counsel Alensug?
Present.
Right, person on the agenda?
Thank you.
Two Dianas?
It was your twin sister. Attorney Lamanna?
So the first item on the agenda is an RFP for the sale of 78 Rockdale Avenue. This is a piece of property that came into the city's possession via tax title. It's assessed at over a half a million dollars. The back taxes exceed that figure of the assessment per recent case law. The city is entitled to retain all of the money and taxes that erode, which require to return any funds that are in excess. But this is an opportunity to get a single-family home back on the tax roll and perhaps obtain more than a half a million dollars in revenue for the city and the general fund.
Any questions for Attorney Lamanna? What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, roll call.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Alensug?
Yes.
Right, next on the agenda?
Second is an RFP for 34A Essex Street.
This is also a piece of property that came into the city's possession for non-payment of taxes. I believe the husband and wife passed away. They have a number of children that are scattered around the country. They just had no interest in this building. I think Ward Counselor from Ward Three can attest this property is in terrible condition and probably warranted to tear this down. I don't think it can be rehabbed as a practical matter. There's a church on Easton Avenue that's expressed interest over the years and tried to buy it from the siblings. I think Habitat for Humanity would be interested in it. They've expressed an interest to the city officials. Here, the back taxes are only $45,000, so we wouldn't have the same revenue generating here, but we would get a property back on the tax rolls. I think there's actually a tree growing through the roof, so this tells you how bad of a condition this property is in.
Right, thank you. Any questions for Attorney Lamanna?
Counselor?
Counsel Alenson?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I've been to this property many times. Also complaints from neighbors too because of the condition of the house. There's a lot of, the neighbors have issues with rats and all of that. And also, I totally agree. I'm glad that we are putting this here. It's about time. I've known about this four years ago, so I move to, if there's not any questions from my colleagues, move to approve for this project.
Any other questions? What's the wish of the committee? Did you have a question?
Just a point of clarification. It is a very long process to take a property by tax taking. Once you take it, the property owners have a one-year right of redemption. So these both have come into the city's ownership in the last several months. But it is painfully slow at the land court for a tax taking. As you can see, the Rockdale property owes over $500,000 in taxes, so that didn't happen overnight.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Alensug?
Yes.
And third one is an RFP for Two State Street.
This council is aware, several years ago, under, several years ago, and I don't remember this was under Mayor McGee, I think it might have started under Mayor McGee, but this property was taken by eminent domain for the purposes of having a welcome center for the Lynn Public Schools. There was some talk about some other municipal uses in the basement. Because of our recent purchase of 145 Market Street, all of the school administration functions are going to 145 Market, which this property is really surplus. So we've established a $3.1 million and change mandatory purchase price. This will represent what we paid plus the $400-plus thousand in improvements to the building, plus whatever closing costs that there are. And there have been some suitors that have expressed an interest, so hopefully the city will be able to recoup all of its funds, and another property with a commercial value tax base will be added to the tax rolls.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney Lamanna? No. What is the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
Second. You have a second? Counsel Net, second.
Second. Do you have a second?
Roll call.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Alensug?
Yes.
Okay, we have, next we have a discussion for a request from Anna Lally and Lynn Mainstreet to speak on the Second Annual Pizza Challenge to be held from October 6, 2025, to Columbus Day on October 13, 2025. Pizza ballot boxes to be in the foyer from October 14 to October 20, 2025.
What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, and one more, right?
We have other business. A request from the mayor's office to use the foyer for their annual Halloween event on Tuesday, October 28, 2025, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
What is the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the Ways and Means Committee meeting. Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Counsel Net?
Present.
Present, Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present, Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Present, Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present, and Counsel Field? Absent?
Absent.
Okay.
Could you please give your transfer orders?
Yep. Okay, we have $8,000 from the Health Department, for the Health Department to move the overage in salaries or expenses.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
I'm already forwarding.
Second. Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $876 for insurance premium for prior year bill.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $813 from Capital Projects for prior year bill.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $900 to fund a statutory workman's comp fund.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $100,000 to fund statutory unemployment benefit.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent.
Certified orders please.
Certified funds. We have $249,434 to fund the Green Communities Competitive Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $235,170 from National GRIN to fund the Municipal Energy Advocate Position.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $22,433.56 for the Fire Department for the FY26 state 911 department training grant.
Motion to approve?
Second. Okay, roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $200,000 to the Police Department for cameras, drones, citation printers, and wayfinding signage.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $80,114.40 to the Police Department for the FY26 state 911 department training grant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $8,802,201 to the School Department for the FC305 FY26 Title I Grant.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $5,201,769 to the School Department for the FC240 FY26 Fed Idea Grant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $385,000 to the School Department for equipment upgrades for the LVTI Building Trade Program.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $365,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC460 Early College Support Grant Program.
Motion?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $275,236 to the School Department for the FY26 FC221 RTAP 221 Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $130,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC1815 ELE Support Summer Grant Program.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $118,037 to the School Department for the FC262 FY26 Fed Idea ECSE Grant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $38,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC215 Genocide Ed Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $25,000 to the School Department for the LVTI FY26 to support auto mechanic and athletic program.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $23,500 to the School Department for the FY26 FC126 Computer Science Engage Grant Program.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $19,200 to the School Department for the FY26 FC589 Civics and TNL Grant Program.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $20,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC422 CTE Improvement and Equipment Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $13,120 to the School Department to support the Washington STEM School.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $13,000 to the School Department to support the summer programming at LVTI.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $10,000 to the School Department to support the Ford School summer programs.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $10,000 to the School Department to support goals or projects by the principal at Hood Elementary.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $10,000 to the School Department FY26 21st CCLC Summer FC644 Grant Program.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. $500 to the School Department by the Connected Nation for Teens Teach Tech Program.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent.
Orders please.
And we have order that has honored the mayor's hereby authorized to execute a contract with Harbor Engineering, Vanessa Hengen, Rustland Inc., for a term in excess of three years to provide the City of Lynn with engineering services relating to the Seaport Marina.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent. Ordered that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Lynn, DPW hereby accepts a gift from Apple Studios in the amount of $5,000. The money is intended to be used as a gift for allowing the movie studio to utilize a parking lot at the GE Field on Summer Street while filming on location at 16 Raden Street.
Motion approved.
Second? You hear a second?
Second.
Second roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present, Counselor Field absent.
So, um...
Then we have one new business?
Yeah, one new business, please.
We have ordered that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and 53A and a half, City of Lynn hereby accepts a gift with an approximate value of $3,400 from Aimiridia Tree Service and Masonry for labor and materials to repair retaining law, retaining wall on the floating bridge on in Lynn.
What's the wish committee?
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other business, any emergency? No emergency. What's the wish committee?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Yep. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Thank you. I thought you wanted to continue on.[1145.28]
Good evening, everyone. Today is September 9, 2025. I would like to call the Utilities Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Allenzog.
Present.
Present. Counselor McLean, absent. Counselor Hogan.
Present.
Present. Counselor Mejumadre.
Present.
Present. And Counselor Meany.
Present.
Okay. We do not have any public hearings today, but we have a special presentation of our new staff here at City Hall. I would like to call Mr. Bamedele Akinwolemiwa to please approach your podium and please tell us about yourself and your role here at City Hall.
Oh, thank you very much. My name is Bamedele Akinwolemiwa. You can call me Dele. I'm the new Energy Manager for the City of Lin. So I've got a PhD in energy technologies and experience basically undertaking energy analysis and developing systems for energy storage. So one of the main reasons why effectively I was interested in this role and contributing to this community is because of the fact that the city is actually making a lot of strides towards, you know, effectively, you know, moving renewable energy, incorporating clean energy into most of the municipal buildings. So as a Green Communities City, basically, my role in the city would effectively be working with the sponsors of MassSafe and with a Green Communities program, basically, to look into ways to effectively improve energy-saving measures in our municipal buildings. And I'm really very excited to contribute my quota to this good and great city. Thank you.
Dele, did I pronounce it right?
That is correct, sir.
Yeah, you know, I totally understand. We were just talking here before the start of this meeting of how to pronounce your name correctly.
Yeah, that was correct.
My name is Coco Alinzog, and a lot of people here still don't know how to pronounce that. So I just want to make sure that we're pronouncing correctly and how important it is for you. My colleagues here might have some questions, and I just request you to stay in the podium for a while.
Yes.
Any questions from the council?
Dele, is there any projects in the works that you're going to start on right away?
Yes. So basically, we will be applying for, like, some test grants, and I'm working with members, team members of the Capitus Project Unit to look into refurbishing some of the buildings, basically. And one of the most interesting things, really, is the fact that there's a strong foundation of energy-saving measures that a Capitus Project Unit has actually done in place already. So my role, really, is to aggregate most of these projects and effectively look for opportunities to attract more grants to the city. So we're looking into getting some new test grants for a few schools. Yesterday, I made a visit to Harrington, and I've actually visited about eight to 10 schools already since I started this role on the 18th of August. So yes, there are a few projects I'm actually working and contributing to right now.
Awesome. Thank you. And we want to welcome your board to the City of Lin.
Thank you very much, sir.
Counselor Meany.
Dele, first of all, welcome. And then I just had a couple of questions. Are you a Kiwi? Are you from New Zealand originally?
No. I'm originally Nigerian, but I've lived for a long time in the UK. I did almost live in the UK, in Nottingham, precisely.
And then another just softball question. So why, what was the primary motivation to go from the private sector into government?
Well, that's an interesting question. So mainly, basically, the thing is, well, in the private sector, we do a lot of innovation, a lot of systems analysis and things of the sort. But the main reason why I really want to work in a community setting is because of the fact that a lot of times when we do energy analysis, we look at it from a systems perspective. We always do a lot of analyses and logical descriptions, but many a times, we don't actually look at the real impact that these renewable energy systems would have on our communities. So I just really think that my skill sets, it is really very important to bring these skill sets to bear, you know, in enhancing the community. So I'm actually moving away from systems analysis into community-centered renewable energy systems and things of that sort. So I really do think that bringing these, you know, perspectives into the community, you know, is really very important as opposed to, you know, for profit and things of that sort, basically.
Thank you for sharing. I wish you nothing but the best of luck.
Thank you very much, sir.
I would like to follow up Counselor Meany's questions as well because, Counselors, in your packet, there is a resume of Dele there. And it's also fresh off breath air, having this British accent giving reports to us, just watching this British telenovela sometimes, and it's cool to hear that. But in addition to Counselor Meany's question, we reviewed your resume very, very amazing. I used the word "very" twice because it's just very amazing. You've traveled the world and basically apply your experience. But this would be your first US position. From UK, you went straight here. So my question to you, what experience internationally that you can apply to our city? And number two, how familiar are you with the City of Lin?
Very good. Thank you very much, sir. So basically, for the first question, really, in terms of systems analysis in general, what I would bring in here, I've actually learned a lot. That Lin is a multicultural community, really. So I think these multicultural understanding, intercultural communication and relationship, which I've actually had in my career, in Asia and in Europe, I would actually bring that, you know, into effect, you know, in the city. And in terms of my specific experience, really, when we look at energy systems in abstraction, these are scientific concepts and technological concepts that we're really trying to transfer into context-based specifics, really. So the skill sets from the technical side, I already have that. And with respect to understanding and learning about the lifestyle here in Lin, I'm actually looking forward to that, basically. And I'm really very happy, you know, and looking forward to embed myself within the community. Yes, this role is a technical and technologically, you know, aligned role, but I really do also want to contribute to the community and the social side of this role, basically. And yes, I'm actually looking forward to learn a lot about the City of Lin. Now, so my colleagues have actually taken me around. I've been to the Marina. I've been to a few places. Like I said earlier on, I've actually visited about eight to 10 of our schools already. So I'm actually getting myself used to the community, really. And I'm looking forward to, you know, making a very strong contribution to the community at large.
Please do not hesitate to approach. There's 11 of us here. We can also assess you in any way, shape or form. We can invite you to our communities and wards as well. So just, we're having you, we're having that open invitation on you. Any questions from the counselors? No follow-up questions? We would like to welcome you and congratulate you with your position.
Thank you.
And again, if you have any questions or anything, just let us know. What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Approve. What is the wish of the committee?
Uh, I don't know.
This is just an introduction part. So are we?
Did I get that right?
Yes, you can. You can close this committee now.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Congratulations.
All right. Licensing Committee for Tuesday, September 9. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Field.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hogan.
Present.
Present. Counselor Net.
Present.
Present. Counselor Allenzog.
Present.
Present. Counselor Mejumadre.
Present.
Perfect attendance. Excellent.
Okay. We have New Taxi Operator Victoria Acosta-Palanco.
Sorry. Before we begin, we do have translation available. So if anybody needs translation, it is available. Thank you. Mrs. Acosta-Palanco is here. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion or questions? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. That license is granted, and it is ready right now in the Clerk's office. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have Rafael Espinal?
Mr. Espinal, you here? Yep. Okay. What's the wish of the committee?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Posed. That license is also granted and is ready right now in the City Clerk's office. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Juan Holguen Gonzalez.
Mr. Holguen Gonzalez. Mr. Holguen Gonzalez.
He's not here?
No. What's the wish of the committee?
We have a motion to table.
We have a motion to table.
If you wait, wait 10 minutes.
Okay. I'll wait.
Is there a second for the?
Second.
Second. Non-debatable. All in favor to table. Aye. Posed. That license has been tabled. Next.
Do we have Catherine Jimenez Romero?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. That license is granted and is ready right now in the Clerk's office. Thank you.
We have Diamead Malandano Alvarez. Mr. Alvarez.
Mr. Malandano, Malnado Alvarez? Yep. Can you state your name? Okay. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. That license is granted and is ready right now in our City Clerk's office. Thank you. Gracias.
And the last one is Panayodas Sumas. Don't see anybody here.
Sumas?
Oh, maybe this.
Sumas? No.
Panayodas Sumas.
Mr. Sumas? No. Okay. What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to table.
You have a motion to table?
Second.
Second. Non-debatable. All in favor to table?
Aye.
Posed. That license has also been tabled. We have signed license renewals. We'll take them as a whole if we can.
Okay.
Take them as a whole.
Okay. Counselor Hogan, we'll take them as a whole. We have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion approved by Counselor Hogan.
Second.
Second by Counselor Net. Any discussion on any of those locations?
None.
None, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Those are all granted. Thank you. We have some canning dates.
Here we have Sewell Anderson Elementary School PTO, adults only, September 6 and 7, 2025. Lin Classical Football, adults only, October 10, 11, and 12, 2025. And Lin Classical Girls Basketball, adults only, November 14, 15, 16, 2025.
Motion approved.
You have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on any of those dates? Requests? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Those three dates are approved. And we wish them luck. Any other new business? Any other business? Madam Clerk?
No new business.
Okay. What's the wish of the committee? Motion adjourned. Motion adjourned?
Thank you.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Posed. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Present. Present, Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present, Counsel Allensoo?
Present.
Present, Counsel Hogan? Counsel Hogan? Present. And Counsel Matul?
Present.
Present.
Perfect attendance. Excellent.
Okay. We have a presentation from Girls Inc. regarding youth video that is being released on September 26th regarding Lynn Girls Inc. and the pressure of cigarettes and drug use.
Excellent. We have representatives from Girls Inc. here. How many? Stand up and be recognized. Don't be shy. Awesome. Good job. Does anyone want to come to the podium and explain what the presentation will be?
Yes. I am the adult advisor for Girls Inc. for the Part of the Solution Peer Leaders. We focus on substance misuse and prevention.
Awesome.
You know, here in Lynn. We received a grant from the 84 Movement, which is a division of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to combat tobacco with social justice.
Awesome.
So the video that we made alongside audio chemists here in Lynn, you know, focuses on the struggles of Lynn in terms of tobacco use.
Excellent. Okay. Is there a narration that's needed or just play the video?
Just play the video.
Excellent. Thank you.
For years, big tobacco companies have been targeting vulnerable populations and advertising and focusing their sales on youth and minority communities. Lynn, Massachusetts is no exception. Lynn is a city just over 100,000 people located about 10 miles north of East of Boston. Over 40 languages are spoken here. 13.7% of the residents live under the poverty line. It's a place where struggle and survival are hand in hand. And where people are used to being overlooked but never ignored by industries that profit off addiction. This is Lynn English High School. It is the school with the largest population of ESL, English as a language, students in Lynn. Many of these students are first or second generation immigrants that are trying to find community. Right down the street from our school is this convenience store that is a huge staple to those high school students, whether it's an energy drink before class or just a quick snack after school. Either way, we come and go down here a lot and it's on the same street as our school. But now, this same convenience store is a licensed tobacco retailer. And the big glowing vape sign on their front door is something you can't ignore as we walk to school every day. This is a map of all the licensed tobacco retailers in Lynn. Tobacco retailers are any store that can legally sell tobacco products, from cigarettes to vapes. See these red dots? Each one is a store. And a lot of them are within 1,000 feet of a school. According to the American Cancer Society's Cancer Action Network, this isn't random. This is a system, a business model. The tobacco industry has spent decades targeting low-income and black communities, offering cheap products that cost people their health, their time, and their lives. Addiction isn't just personal. It's political. There are 16 times more tobacco retailers in Lynn than there are Dunkin' Donuts. And if you're from around here, you know the impact of that statement. That's why the vape sign isn't just some neon ad. It's not just a sign we pass on our way to school. It's a reminder that they're still targeting us. And the worst part? It's working. Data from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health states that minorities make up 40% of Lynn's population. It is also shown that in these denser minority areas, there are more tobacco retailers. In these areas, there's a higher prevalence of low-income individuals and limited English teachers, making it a threat to environmental justice. Environmental justice is the idea that all people, regardless of race, ethnicity, income, or other factors, deserve equal protection from environmental threats and equal access to environmental benefits and resources. Compared to neighboring communities, tobacco retail density in Lynn exceeds other towns, the county, and the state. The nicotine retailer problem is deeper than just numbers of outlets. Existing research has found correlation between retailers and the numbers of smokers, as well as lower quit rates. It's hard for someone to quit when they're constantly reminded you of advertising and outlets. Do you think it's fair that we are being targeted?
Excellent. Excellent job, Girls Inc. Does anyone on the committee have any comments or questions? Counselor Allensoo?
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any of the researchers and presenters talk about the chart that you mentioned that Lynn is the leading city in Essex County? Which link? Which organization or data researched it? Where did you find it?
That was from the Massachusetts.
Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Okay. Attorney Lamanna, can I invite you real quick? Do we have? What is our current ordinance about branding? And because there's a big sign that says vape. I mean, I know. I know you cannot see a tobacco commercial on television now or any big billboards. But what is our local ordinance?
I don't believe that there's any, any regulations on the book about branding for cigarettes. There looks, there's some violations I saw. We have a public safety ordinance that limits the coverage on a window. Law enforcement officers want to be able to see inside. And some of the windows that I saw in this video looked like it was pretty clearly in violation of our existing ordinance. I can say later tonight at 6:30, the Board of Health is considering a Board of Health regulation that when a tobacco business goes out of business, that license is retired with a hope that eventually with 165 or so tobacco licenses in the city of Lynn will go down. And if your business closes for 30 days, that you'd have to, it's considered that you're banning your license. So there is, there is currently some rules and regulations that are being considered by the Board of Health to try to address this. We do have a very high number of tobacco businesses.
Thank you, Attorney Lamanna. Can this video be shared to the Board of Health as well?
I certainly, it certainly can. This could be, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a way we can share this with the Board of Health.
Yeah, they did, they did make a.
Okay. They've done a presentation to the Board of Health.
Also, can we, our inspection services, if it is blocking windows and?
Absolutely. Yep. I'll reach out to the, I'll reach out to ISD.
Get a copy of the video.
Yep.
Where else will this video be played?
This video.
Come to the podium, just so people that are on TV can hear. Sorry. That's my job to remind you.
This video will be premiered at the art show at Girls Inc. on September 26th. And then the plan is from there that will be shared via YouTube site at Girls Inc. It will be shared with Lynn Community Television.
Excellent.
And, you know. And then we're having an event in Boston on October 15th.
Excellent.
As we're doing.
Excellent. Any other questions? Counsel Hogan?
Just want to say thank you for that video, just because it's awareness that other people don't know about. And I think it's a very powerful video and it's coming from peers because they're, they're talking about their peers and the, and students that they go to school with. And it is true. You know, you walk by that sign right there at Lynn English and you see the big vape sign right when you walk through the door. Probably giving you an idea of what you might want to try or something like that. But I would commend all you guys on your work on this project. And this is where it starts by making a difference by bringing it to City Council. And we can share it with other departments in the city, city of Lynn. Attorney Lamanna is going to help us with that there and just on the legal aspect of what we can do. But we really appreciate you guys for coming tonight and thank you for this presentation.
Well said, Counsel Hogan. Any other questions or comments? Committee? Nope? Again, just great job by everybody. You know, this is, you're doing an amazing job.
The Girls do have a couple of things that they wanted to share.
Sure. Please come right to the podium. If you want to share your first name, you can.
Are they, are you saying?
All right. Hi.
Hi there.
My name is Arianes Garcia. I am one of the Part of the Solution Peer Leaders at Girls Inc. I have a paper, just one of the frames that were in the video to pass around in case anyone wants to have a closer look at them.
Excellent. Terry's going to collect a copy as well for our records.
So this was a map of all of Essex County. And as the video mentioned, environmental justice is being threatened in a lot of these areas that have more, lower-income and minority communities such as Lynn, whereas a lot of the advertising and just standards and natural stigma around these places aren't as, people don't pay as much attention to it as they would in like Peabody or something if that same exact convenience store, that same exact sign came up in Middleton or Marblehead down the street, there, it would be all over the news. And there's a historical reason for that and there's a political reason for that as well. And really, our purpose with this video, I think all of us had joined this group for a reason at Girls Inc. And we really wanted to educate other people because we all have some personal story related to just the impact of any form of substance abuse of someone who, you know, never got the opportunity to get educated on things like this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, and I also wanted to just share, uh, it was shown in the video, it's a map of the tobacco retailers within 1,000 feet of a school. You'll see once you get the paper that the blue dots are further than 1,000 feet from a school while the red dots are within 1,000 feet of a school. And just like a review of like 44 of the 108 tobacco retailers in Lynn are located within 1,000 feet of the school, which is about 40.7%.
Mm-hmm. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Well, again, I commend all of you for the effort that you put into the video and certainly for coming here. I know it, it's not an easy thing for public speaking, but the bravery that you showed here and the, everything that you showed to us here and everybody watching at home and the message that you have, it's certainly something that you put a lot of effort into. It is extremely helpful to everyone in the community. It's helpful to us. And, and Mayor Nicholson's here as well. So on behalf of our counsel, I commend all of you and I thank you for that presentation. Thank you again. Yep. Move on, Tony.
Hey. We have a second item is a request from Revise, the city's partner under the National Grid and Mass Save's Community First Partnership to hang door hangers on residents' doors to promote the program.
Anyone hear from Revise? Please come to the podium, state your name and your position.
Good evening. Neil Potter. I am the Director of Partnerships for Revise Inc.
Great. Did you want to speak any further or?
Yeah, please. This is a little tough to follow. That was a tremendous presentation by Girls Inc.
You take a deep breath.
A little background, I think, would probably be helpful for everybody. So Mass Save introduced a grant called the Community First Partnership in 2022 to better serve underserved communities. It was focused on environmental justice communities primarily. So those are mostly folks who are people of color, lower income, or English isolated. Lynn has a large, large portion of the city is environmental justice areas. There was a three-year program initially from '22 to '24 that the city joined forces with Swampset to jointly pursue that. When that three-year term was up, both municipalities decided that they wanted to apply for these grants independently. And Lynn was awarded that grant by National Grid and Mass Save earlier this year because of Revise being the selected home performance contractor or a Mass Save partner to provide these services in the first rounds of the Community First Partnership. Because of the trust that we've earned, the city re-upped with Revise to keep providing the services so that folks can be pointed to our company to give them no-cost home energy assessments and any resulting insulation work and HVAC upgrades and help them to unlock all of the rebates and incentives that the Mass Save program provides for everybody. Some of you may remember, my colleague was here, I believe it was in '23. We were looking for an exemption for us to canvass the city to knock on doors. That was, that was not granted. There were some concerns that were raised about doing that. And when the, this new three-year period, the '25 to '27 period, came up, we said, hey, let's try a little gentler touch here. We need to, we need to spread the word. One of those things is, one of those, the ways of us doing that is to meet people where they are. That's oftentimes at their home. But we figured we could make that non-intrusive, not bother folks by simply doing a literature drop. So just hanging door hangers on, on people's doors, not knocking the door, not ringing the doorbell, not waking up anybody from their naps. So nobody's getting any, any calls from, from perturbed residents in their ward. So I do have some samples of the door hangers if folks would like to review. That could be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you.
You'll see, these are, these are bilingual as well. There's, this would typically have the hole cut out so it could hang on, on the door. These are just samples, however, so that is not the case. These are just samples however, so, um, uh, that is not the case.
For the real ones, they'll have the hole cut out.
You got it. Yes, sir.
And you'll get us a copy of the real one when it comes?
This, yes, I can get you, uh, anything you like. So it'll be, it'll be identical to this, but just with the hole punched through it.
Okay. Any more presentation?
No, I'm certainly here to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone on the committee or any other councillors, Councilor Alton?
Mr. Chairman, are we, are we voting for this?
Uh.
This is just a presentation. I, I strongly, uh, because this is a good, very good program. And I know I was one of those who are against door knocking.
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote on it because there's no ordinance preventing them.
Good, right, good.
If I'm correct, is that right, Attorney Lamanna? Yeah, I don't think, they're just coming here with the presentation as to what they're, um, planning to do. There's no ordinance that they would, that we would need to take a vote on, um, for them to go, as long as they're not soliciting goods or services, uh, face-to-face, uh, ringing bells, knocking doors. If they're just leaving literature. And we'll just caution that the, uh, the, the federal government does have an ordinance against leaving these in or around mailboxes. So I'm sure your, your staff that's going to be handing these out are educated. I will caution you that if anybody does practice door knocking or ringing bells, they're subject to a $300 fine. That's a city ordinance and they haven't been granted, so they shouldn't present that they have some type of license to go door-to-door. There's no permit being issued by this body this evening for anybody going door-to-door to hang these from a doorknob, um, or whatever in the area. So, um, if they're going to engage folks that way, they are going to be subject to a $300 fine.
Understood. We will communicate that to staff.
Any other question? Thanks a lot here.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a few questions. So, um, when would this program commence in terms of the calendar? How long do you think the program will take to canvass? And, um, additional question would be, have you researched, um, the feasibility of the cost for direct mail rather than leafletting? And lastly, I would prefer if you have this printed out, that you use a Union printer with a Union bug on here somewhere, that it's Union-made and it's done from a Union print shop. That's something that's glaringly missing. But, um, those are my questions initially.
Uh, very good. I appreciate that, um, and those questions. One, the, uh, it's a three-year cycle that's already commenced. There was a memorandum of understanding that was signed between, um, our company and the mayor, uh, on June 30th.
And it didn't include this letter, leafletting as part of that agreement?
The, in the memory, the memorandum of understanding, um, it talks about co-branded efforts, including, um, doing, uh, lit drops and, and actually-
Can we get a copy of that for the council, please?
Please.
Yeah, no problem. Secondly, can you-
You have this for three years, is what you're saying?
Correct. We are partnered with the town, with the city. That is correct. So, um, leafletting will be a, a, a much quicker process than canvassing. Normally canvassing, we would have a 10-minute conversation at the door for folks who are, but word is, word is dropping.
Going every residence in the market?
That's correct. Yeah. And, um, you, you mentioned direct mail as well, right? And we're certainly going to do that. You know, marketing studies show people need multiple touches really to, to take action. And being able to provide different, uh, means of doing that. Did you? Okay, great. Well, thanks for doing, how was your experience?
Very good.
Great. Awesome. That, that's wonderful to hear. The Union bug, I, I hear you on that and I'll bring that back to my, to my marketing director. That's, uh, I, I understand where you're coming from there. So I will certainly bring that back to the marketing director to, to speak to.
Any other questions from the committee or council? Are there any other communities that you do literature drops in?
The, uh, how do I say this? It is not sound. So Lynn is the only community that we work with that actually bans us from, um, doing-
We don't ban anybody.
Can, can canvassing.
We don't ban anybody, just to be clear on that. We don't ban anybody. You have to apply for a license.
To, so Lynn is the only community in which, um, we have not been granted that license. Is that, is that a better, um, way to present that? So, uh, right now, um, you know, we're canvassing in Swampscott, in Everett, uh, in Brockton, in Ipswich, in Northampton, East Hampton and West Hampton, uh, in Sharon. We're also canvassing in, those are all towns where we are the Community First Partnership, um, home performance contractor. We canvass all across Massachusetts, um, uh, in, uh, you know, just about every town in, uh, in the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a bit of follow-up if I could. I worry about the leafletting, particularly around the political season as well. But if there's littering that's going to occur, is there any sort of follow-up from Revise that will take a look at the areas you've done, let's say, and make sure that these things aren't just strewn from, because you can't put them in the mailboxes.
Sure.
As Gerefield said, but some type of follow-up around being sure these get into the doors or, um, at least some preventative mechanism to do some drive-bys in the area that you did canvass where they don't end up on the streets, a littering problem.
Uh, we-
What I see blowing away, you know, into the neighbor's door, things like that. How do we prevent that?
Uh, that's a great question and I don't have a great answer for you. I'll be completely honest with you. But we'll certainly be aware of that. Um, it's not-
Maybe that's what's going to help, the hangers.
Absolutely.
If you go inside or inner door, rather than a central door, all those tricks, your team needs to know.
Certainly.
Going canvassing, you know?
Yeah. Okay. Great. I, I appreciate those perspectives. Absolutely. And this is, this is a, a large part of this is of course helping people to reduce their costs. But, um, it's also to help, uh, you know, reach, uh, climate goals and, and environmentalism in the city.
You want everyone to get one.
That's, that's, that's right.
Councilor Meany?
How are you? I, I had a meeting, um, myself and Councilman Matul with, um, a representative that says something similar. And, and our understanding was that there's tiers of this program. And to paraphrase, the lowest tier are the, the most needy households. The, the marketplace is saturated where there's no funding for that. Is that still, is that still accurate? Is that going to be improved, changed or whatever?
Great, great question. And I'm glad that you did hear about that. National Grid did, um, hit their cap for funding that was, uh, uh, set aside for this for the year 2025 about a month ago. So at, at, since, since then and through the rest of the year, folks that are 60% or less median income, um, are going to be waitlisted until the 2026 calendar year before they can be served. So that, uh, the budget runs for National Grid, um, on the calendar year. So that'll be refreshed at that point.
I guess my point is from a demographic point of view, um, Lynn is a, is working-class town. There's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of households here that don't meet the criteria. So, you know, would you, whom, whom, whom would you be servicing if, if the majority of the clientele you're trying to reach can't use your program?
We, we will be serving those folks, but, uh, like I said, we're going to have to wait until 2026 when those, uh, when those funds are replenished, uh, by the utilities. This is not something that our company or any of our competitors, uh, any, any home performance contractor, um, controls. Uh, we're, we're at the mercy of the rules that's, uh, that they, uh, that they put on us. But the, really the reason of the Community First Partnership, kind of as I said at the top, is to help serve the underserved. And, uh, the, the city is in the process now of hiring an, an energy advocate, um, uh, to do the work for us to, to help coordinate with, to reach those priority populations. So, uh, we want to get in quickly here at the end of the year, um, and into 2026. So that we can make sure that, uh, we're taking advantage of, uh, the new, uh, annual budget, uh, when it comes out.
What, with the fiscal year, so is it January 1st? When would you anticipate the, the funding for the, the, the most need, most needy tier, we'll call it, to have funding?
Uh, not January 1st.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Clark, we appreciate the presentation.
Thanks all for allowing me the time. Appreciate it.
Uh, any other business, Madam Clerk?
No, I have the business-
No, what's the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'm, I'm in favor. I suppose we are adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 9th council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilor Alton?
Present.
President Council Chakudis?
Present.
President Council Field?
Present.
President Council Hogan?
Present.
President Council Lapiam?
Present.
President Council Matul?
Present.
President Council McLean, absent. Council Meany?
Present.
President Council Mejumadre?
Present.
President Council Net?
Present.
President Council Walsh?
Present.
Will we all rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Mr. President, I have a longer list.
You have a list? Okay, Brian.
Right, if we can remember the Deveraux family, the Moynihan family, the Cunnell family, the Toner family, the McDonald family, and the Honorable, uh, Thomas Costin, our 45th and youngest mayor in the city of Lynn.
Mr. President, I'd like to add Boni Carr's mom and the Dupree family as well. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Your motion to accept the minutes from July 22nd.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept. Second, all in favor? Moments, the, the minutes are accepted. I think we're going to have the mayor and some of the state delegation come up. We're going to give out a citation. I think, um, is the Coach Smith, are you there too? You want to come up for a minute? Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, uh, to the Lynn City Council for hosting us this evening to be able to present this special recognition, honor me joined here by my colleagues in, in the state government. The, uh, young man that we're recognizing this evening has, uh, achieved great things in, in, uh, short times. Uh, be able to, uh, see what he has accomplished, uh, in all that he has ahead of him is an exciting moment here for, for, uh, our entire community, uh, particularly for, for my office, but really for the city as a whole. So I have this official citation of the mayor's office and it says, "Be it known that Mayor Jared C. Nicholson hereby extends his most sincere congratulations and his great appreciation to Lucian Paula in recognition of winning the MIAA State Championship for Outdoor Track. And be it further known, the entire city of Lynn extends its best wishes for continued success. Great joy and happiness. Congratulations." No need to run. You already proved that here.
I think we would have went up there quicker.
Don't go anywhere. Yeah, we got a whole bunch of these to give out here. So on behalf of the Lynn City Council, uh, it offers the sincerest congratulations, um, to Luciana Paula, to St., St. Mary's High School for the recognition of, uh, um, winning the MIAA State Championship for the outdoor track. And on behalf of all my colleagues here, I want to congratulate you with the citation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brendan Crichton, honored to be back here, uh, with my colleagues in Lynn, Lynn City Council. And, uh, to celebrate not only a wonderful athlete, but a, a wonderful person. I've had the opportunity to get to know Lucian's family over the years, uh, my son being close with the family. And, uh, I knew you were fast. I didn't know you were this fast. But, uh, certainly, uh, very proud, uh, to have such tremendous student athlete and a great person from the city of Lynn. Congratulations. And I'd like to present you with a state senate citation.
Good evening, everyone. I am State Representative Sean Reed and just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. We're also proud of you, Lucian, for putting Lynn on the map. I know everyone in this room, especially your mom, is, uh, extremely proud of you. I'm going to read this quickly, uh, as a citation from the House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers sincere congratulations to Lucian Paula for winning the MIAA State Championship for Outdoor Track.
Thank you and congratulations.
I just want to give a big shout-out to my family and my brother for being my training partner, as long as my teammates who are with me the whole way. Will Potter getting me through those 200 repeats, the middle distance squad, and Coach D for giving me those hard workouts. 14 by 200 wasn't always easy, but with the team, it made it so much easier. And I want to give a big shout-out to my coaches, Coach Smith and Coach D, for getting me through the season with injuries and through hard times. So I just want to give them a big shout-out and say thank you.
Just going to have to invite any of the colleagues, the council and family. If you want to take a quick picture, you guys come on up. Have everybody come up. Do you have any communications from the mayor?
Okay. We have a communication from His Honor, the mayor. Dear councillors, I write to you to respectfully request you set down a public hearing for an ordinance entitled Cannabis Equity Ordinance in the city of Lynn. Currently, Massachusetts general laws require municipalities to take proactive steps to ensure- ensure equitable access to the cannabis industry. This ordinance would meet this requirement. This proposal is based off of a model ordinance published by the Cannabis Control Commission. By setting a date to formally consider this ordinance, the city will take an important step towards ensuring that economic opportunities in this emerging industry are distributed justly and that our community leads with principles of equity, accountability, and social justice. Thank you for your consideration of this ordinance, and I would once again request that it be set down for a public hearing at your next council meeting. Sincerely, Mayor Jared C. Nicholson."
What's the wish of the council?
Set it down.
Motion to set down, second, discussion, all in favor? Aye. All right, set it down. Public hearings.
Hey, we have a public hearing for a $9 million new Pickering Middle School bond order.
Okay, open up the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor, I think we have someone from the mayor's office here, Daniel Smith.
Thank you, Council President Walsh and members of the council, um, on behalf of Mayor Nicholson, I'm here tonight to speak in favor of, uh, this $9 million bond authorization for the Pickering project, um, as we've discussed before, this is a vital step to keep the project moving forward and on track for completion, um, as many of you know, earlier this year, the project team encountered unexpected soil conditions and, uh, at the construction site, these conditions have delayed the project and required us to change our approach to the foundation and ground improvements, and after a careful review, the project team pivoted to a new strategy, which has been successful thus far, um, but it does come at cost to the city, so this additional $9 million will cover soft costs, including design, engineering, and project management costs, additional construction contingency, and direct costs tied to the delay, uh, caused by the site conditions, um, I'm here for any questions, and I would respectfully ask that you approve this authorization.
Okay, just stand up to the side, we'll do the hearing, then if council have questions, we'll bring you back up. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street, I'm tentatively in favor of this, but one thing I'd like to have cleared up through the chair is typically a bond is issued when other bonds have been paid off, so there's no real change to the taxpayers, so I wanna clarify that. Is this replacing a couple of $4 million bonds, for example, that were already paid off? Second, I'm kinda disappointed that there wasn't more vetting in this, this is, I, I'm flashing back 25 years when I came to town and we have the Great Sinkin' Classical School. Now, I mean, what kind of engineers don't vet the land that's going on? Everybody in town knew the, the building was gonna sink, and the experts, Sims, Meany, McKee, and the rest of them said, "Oh, yeah, it'll be okay." So, I wanna know, how did this happen? And, and I was also disappointed when the geothermal that was touted and gonna be another first for our city is now scrapped, and they have to use that money to mitigate what was, I guess, not vetted very well. So, those three questions to point out, we need this school, so I guess I'm in favor of it, but let's have that discussion, please.
Thank you, anyone else in favor? Come on up to the podium.
Thank you, Council President Walsh, and good afternoon, city council members, we got a few minutes left in the noon. My name is Paul Guthro, and my address is 14 Cameron Road. I come before you this afternoon as an excited neighbor of our new Pickering Middle School. I live only blocks away, and my kids attended both Sisson Elementary and Pickering Middle School. I've been watching and listening to this new project since day one, and I cannot wait for its completion. The design and layout of this new school is pretty much optimized, both from a middle school teaching environment and an aesthetically pleasing addition to our neighborhood. I'm very excited and look forward to its completion. I am in favor of this bond order before you for $9 million additional funding for the school. I think the major portion of this additional need is the needed redesign and resultant new construction methods for the foundation base due to the prior design and prior methods interaction with the existing Sisson School building. I don't think that there was anything wrong with the original design and method, it's just that the Sisson building didn't like it. I'm told that the $9 million also has some contingency for future items, so that any and all project completion items are covered. It is also known that some of these expenses may be eligible for Massachusetts School Building Association grant money plus other possible grants. Finally, this $9 million is pretty much only 5% of the total estimated $175 million cost of this project. In the scheme of things, this is very reasonable additional amount for completion of this size and type of project. I ask that all of you please consider voting yes on this bond order, show our city with a unanimous vote that we're all behind this huge effort to improve our school infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor, seeing on that part of the hearing is closed, anybody in opposition to this? Anybody wanna speak in opposition? Anybody wants to speak in opposition? Seeing on that part of the hearing is closed, what is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
The motion to approve, we have a second. Okay, discussion on this, for anybody? Council Meany?
So, I, I am in favor of this, um, $9 million bond for the school, but I do have concerns, you know, we, we borrowed 175 million, we're borrowing another nine, I just, I don't want this to be just a, continuing to borrow every, every so often when we have some kind of a problem with the project, it's a massive project, I understand, it's an engineering marvel, um, the end, the end should be a, a good outcome, but my concern is that we're gonna have to keep borrowing money piecemeal like this, just something I wanted to point out.
Okay, thank you, I'm just gonna have Daniel Smith come up for one more minute, Daniel, if you could, there, there was some questions from some people, and I don't know if you could answer any of those questions, um, particularly around, um, how we got to this point, maybe, if you can, you know?
Yep, yeah, no, absolutely, and, uh, Council Meany, I think your, your point is taken, and, um, a, so this is $9 million in addition to the previous, uh, funding in which we bonded for, and we're obviously being reimbursed for a large portion of the Pickering project, um, part of this additional $9 million is for contingency, so these are funds that may or may not be used, um, if we have, if there are unforeseen conditions that we need to address. How we got here, um, uh, as many of you know, earlier this year, there were cosmetic cracks, not structural, that started appearing in the Sisson School, and basically, the method that we were using to, uh, to do the ground improvements, um, was causing some of these issues, and we hired a bunch more experts, uh, we had, uh, peer reviewing, peer reviewers on our side, our general contractor consigliere also had peer reviewers, and so this really, this meeting of the minds essentially came up with a new method, and, uh, a large majority, this new method is the installation of rigid inclusions and earthquake drains, a large majority of those have already been installed, and we're not seeing the same effects as the previous method.
Okay, all right, thank you for that, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Council Field?
Thank you, is there anybody from the CFO's office here to discuss the bond?
I don't see anybody here.
Okay, all right.
Any other comments or questions, we have a motion, we have a second, Council Lapierre?
Thank you, Mr. President, just if Daniel could come, come up one more time, um, I know that we've suffered, uh, from this in terms of the delay of the project, at the current status, if it were to continue on in this way, are we still looking at an early 2027 opening of the new Pickering?
Um, at this time, we are not, we're, we're looking towards the later end of 2027, uh, so...
You said later end?
Like, like...
Fall of 2027?
Like, December 2027 is what's projected, so this would, uh, instead being, uh, it would be...
It's been about a six-month delay.
Yeah, it, it has been a pretty significant delay, and, um, we're still trying to see if we can get that back on track and accelerate, part of what, uh, the committee is doing right now, as you know, um, is, uh, basically evaluating the sort of pace of the rigid inclusion installation and seeing if we can get some of that time back.
Yeah, yeah. Period.
Okay.
So, it'd be a mid-school year move instead of a fall move?
Yes.
Or even a, you know, new year move? Okay, thank you.
All right, um, do we have a motion, Council Alonson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. President, the, uh, I know the CFO is not here, but Ms. Daniel, maybe you can answer, can, this bond has impact with our residents' taxes?
Um, yeah, I mean, uh, we pay, uh, we pay back bonds in debt with, uh, revenue that the city receives, um, so, uh, the short answer is yes.
But, just be clear about that, we're not raising taxes.
No, we're not, we're not raising, we're not raising... That would be my follow-up. Sorry to clarify, to clarify, uh, we're not raising taxes for this, but like with any sort of bond, this is additional funds that the city revenue needs to pay for.
Okay, good. Any other comments or questions, I don't see none, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call?
Council Alonson?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Council Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Council McLean, absent, Council Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Council Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes. Bond order approved, um, public hearings to be set down.
Hey, we have the petition of Crown Castle Fiber LLC to upgrade seven existing small cell wireless facilities at multiple site locations throughout the city's right-of-way at the following street locations, 565 Chestnut Street, 395 Broadway, 2 Mason Streets, 653 Eastern Ave, 163 Essex Street, 51 Liberty Street, and 20 Thorpe Road. A petition of National Grid to install underground facilities and PVC conduit on Magnolia Ave at the intersection of Conomo Ave to feed in the new Lynn School. And we have the petition of Melina Polanco, 324 Essex Street, Swambskett, owner of Mel's Tire and Auto Service, for permission to have an auto repair flammable license for full service repairs at 517 Lynn Way.
I think we wanna, uh, separate these out, so the first one we'll take a vote on, the set down is gonna be Crown Castle Fiber, so, do anybody have any opposition to that, to do that? Okay, do we have a motion from the council to set down the Crown Castle Fiber?
Set it down.
A motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the next one's gonna be the National Grid Underground PVC, um, Magnolia Ave to feed the new school, just to prove the money for, um, Council Meany has some questions about that.
But, yeah, I'd like to table that one, there's a couple of concerns I have, specifically from a constituent services side that I have yet to be resolved with National Grid, um, I was supposed to have a meeting with them today, um, it didn't happen, so I'd like to table that going forward.
Second?
We have a motion, second, just, um, I'll just say that, you know, over the years, we've had a lot of problems with grid, you know, and they get good, they get bad, so I understand that, so, we have a motion to table, non, non-debatable, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next one, 324 Essex Street, Swambskett, Mel's Tire Auto Service Permission, what's the wish of the council?
Motion to set it down.
Motion to set it down, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all right, set it down. Committees, public property, Council Chakutis?
A unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve, second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all right. Ways and Means, Council Annette?
Yes, Mr. President, all unanimous vote of the committee and make a motion to approve, sir.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, would the clerk read transfers and...
The transfers are being laid over to the next meeting.
Okay.
Certified orders.
Read the certified orders.
$249,434 to fund the Green Communities Competitive Grant Program, $235,170 from National Grid to fund a municipal energy advocate position, $22,433.56 for the Fire Department for the FY26 State 911 Department Training Grant, $200,000 to the Police Department for cameras, drones, citation printers, and wayfinding signage, $80,114.40 to the Police Department for the FY26 State 911 Department Training Grant, $8,802,201 to the School Department for the FC305 FY26 Title I Grant, $5,201,769 to the School Department for the FC240 FY26 SPED IDEA Grant, $385,000 to the School Department for the equipment upgrades for LVTI's Building Trades Program, $365,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC460 Early College Support Grant Program, $275,236 to the School Department for the FY26 FC221 RTAP 221 Grant Program, $130,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC1815 ELA Support Summer Grant Program, $118,037 to the School Department for the FC262 FY26 SPED IDEA ECSE Grant, $38,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC215 Genocide Ed Grant, $25,000 to the School Department for the LVTI FY26 to support auto mechanic and athletic program, $23,500 to the School Department for the FY26 FC126 Computer Science Engage Grant Program, $19,200 to the School Department for the FY26 FC589 Civics TNL Grant Program, $20,000 to the School Department for the FY26 FC422 CTE Improvement and Equipment Grant Program, $13,120 to the School Department to support the Washington STEM School, $13,000 to the School Department to support the summer programming at LVTI, $10,000 to the School Department to support the Ford School Summer Programs, $10,000 to the School Department to support goals or projects by the principal at Hood Elementary, $10,000 to the School Department for the FY26 21st CCLC Summer FC644 Grant Program, $500 to the School Department by the Connected Nation for Teens Teach Tech Program. We have the following orders, order that His Honor, the mayor, is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Harbor Engineering, Vaness Hangan, Brussels Inc., for the term in excess of three years to provide the city of Lynn with engineering services relating to the Seaport Marina. Order that pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A, the city of Lynn DPW hereby accepts a gift from Apple Studios in the amount of $5,000. The money is intended to be used as a gift for allowing the movie studio to utilize a parking lot at GE Field on Summer Street while filming on location at 16 Radden Street. And under new business, we had ordered that the pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and 53A and a half, the city of Lynn hereby accepts a gift with an approximate value of $3,400 from A Meridia Tree Service and Masonry for labor and materials to repair retaining wall on the Floating Bridge Pond in Lynn, Massachusetts.
Okay, is there a motion to accept, we have a second, any discussion, roll call?
Council Alonson?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Council Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Council McLean, absent, Council Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Council Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Present. Okay, utilities, Council Alonson?
Thank you, Mr. President, we had, uh, we met our new energy manager, Bami Dele Akenwole Mewa, uh, commonly called as Dele, uh, we had done, uh, interesting, um, questions, and he brought to us his vision towards Lynn, uh, since this is an educational, um, presentation, I move to, uh, for approval for this.
Okay, so, a motion to accept it, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we'll accept the conversation, okay. Licensing, Council Field?
Thank you, Mr. President, we have a unanimous vote by our committee, I make a motion to approve that.
Unanimous vote, a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bring it down, there we go. Public safety, Council Field?
Thank you, Mr. President, we had two presentations, a powerful presentation performed by Girls Inc., um, in regards to, uh, pressures of cigarettes and sales at local convenience stores, um, that'll be shown citywide coming up, a couple of plans that they have, uh, we were fortunate enough to see it ahead of time, it was well done, and a second presentation from our partner with, um, revised of National Grid and Mass Safe Program, um, our committee did, um, remind them that they don't need an ordinance, they don't need permission to hang hangers, information for residents to reach them where they're at, which was quoted by the, uh, Mr. Potter, um, that we reminded them that door knocking requires a permit, and any employee of theirs that is door knocking or ringing doorbells and soliciting goods or services from the city requires a permit, may be subject to a $300 fine per ordinance from the city of Lynn, so there were two presentations, no votes were taken, thank you.
All right, thank you, so we have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have some old business, I think... I think Councilor Hollingson.
The new business?
I'm bringing up on old business or new business?
Old business. Thank you, Mr. President. This is an exciting day in this council chamber, Mr. President. I'm honored to read this historic addition to our future council meetings, and I would like, Your May, Mr. President, to read this. We, as the Lynn City Council, are pleased to announce that the Lynn City Council, in collaboration with the Information and Technology Department and the City Solicitors Office, has created a new public comment period that we scheduled prior to the second city council meeting of every month. The first public comment session will occur on Tuesday, September 23, 2025, at 5:15 p.m. Now, this is 15 minutes prior to our regular meeting. Interested persons can sign up next week on the newly created platform on the city website. The first five persons to sign up to speak will be allowed to do so prior to the start of the council meeting. Speeches will be limited to three minutes. Translators will be available to those in need of such services. The complete set of rules and procedures governing the public comment session will be posted along the sign-up sheet beginning next week. There are no restrictions on the topics and the speaker may choose to address, but this is a very important to note, Mr. President. Questions to city councillors directly or municipal staff are not permitted. The city council, after a few months of wait, is excited to establish a procedure where we can hear the views and opinions of residents of the City of Lynn directly. We look forward to our next meeting. Motion to approve, Mr. President. I would like to ask for a roll call for this.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any discussion on it? Roll call.
Councilor Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Mathul?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McLean, Abson, Councilor Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Mejij Madre?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Walsh?
Yes. Motion approved. Do we have any other old business by anybody?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have some new business?
New business.
We have new business, okay? New business?
Okay, we have new business. Order that the City of Lynn elects to approve the Purdue Pharmacy Bankruptcy Settlement Plan relating to an opioid lawsuit against Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family, and hereby authorize His Honor, the Mayor, to execute all necessary documents in order to participate in and effectuate the settlement of this matter.
Motion approved.
I'm going to have Monica come up for a second. Just give us a brief overview, Jim, if you could, please.
So, yes, Lynn elected to join a class action lawsuit with a number of other states, counties, municipalities across the country. Purdue Pharma and Sackler were probably the largest offenders of the opioid epidemic. At the outset of the litigation, both Purdue Pharma and Sackler, the Sackler family owns Purdue Pharma, filed for bankruptcy to get protection from judgment creditors in these lawsuits. As part of negotiations in the bankruptcy court, they've agreed to settle with all of the plaintiffs, counties, states, municipalities, with a total of $8 billion coming back to state, cities, counties across the country, and the city has been fortunate enough to receive significant opioid settlements from other companies, whether it be pharmaceuticals or drug manufacturers in the past, and the mayor's office have been working diligently to expend those funds in a manner that's lawful and permitted under the settlement agreements. Per the, our attorneys, our outside attorneys, I think this case may be based in Ohio, but it's definitely out of state, they are strongly recommending the city elect to participate in the settlement. There may not be, quite frankly, any funds available if we didn't elect to go through here, and there is a cutoff date coming up, so it would need to be, this needed to be done tonight, or we'd risk not being able to participate in the settlement.
All right, thank you, Jim. So we have a motion?
To approve.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Meany?
Jim, if you can back from the podium, if you don't mind. I just had a question. So the Purdue Pharma settlement, so who, just, forgive me, just who would receive the funds? Is it city funds? Is it constituents? So who, like, can you break that down for me a little bit?
This funding would come directly to the city. Typically, how it's done is it's dispersed on an annual basis over a number of year period, just because of the large amount, a lot of money that we're talking about here. So on an annual basis, we would be receiving a portion of this $8 billion. I do not unfortunately have, know that the exact amount that we're going to receive, but there is a working group out of the mayor's office that has been expending this money. Some of it's gone to the comm team, some of it has gone to purchase knock-in, some outreach to, for people that need assistance with opioid addictions.
And just to follow up, so does this money go into the general funds? Is it earmarked for certain things?
Oh, it is absolutely earmarked to fight the opioid epidemic. It's not going to give first assistance city solicitors any raises or anything like that.
Thanks, Jim.
Councilor Field had a question.
Thank you, I can just clarify that just a little bit more. The Opioid Abatement Committee that's appointed through the mayor's office, there is a sitting member always from the city council, and that's what Candace McClory will often come up to update us on different measures and votes and what their plan is to move forward. I sat on it, now Councilor McLean sits on that committee, and these funds are definitely used just for opioid-type reasons, for sponsorships, for different clinics, other things throughout the city, but we're updated usually quarterly from Candace McClory that oversees the opioid abatement committee for the city.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
And we'll definitely get an update when we know what the settlement was in portion for the city.
Any other comments or questions? So we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Councilor Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Mathul?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McLean, Abson, Councilor Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Mejij Madre?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Walsh?
Yes. Any other new business from the councils? Councilor Meany?[1634.13]